So we typically don't have a lot of public comment, but I'll open it up for, I think we're probably okay that way. If we could just move on to the, well, you're telling the agenda, so why will I ask, is there any public comment at this time? Before we move on with the rest of our business to be official. I'm not hearing any. So the minutes were the agenda, sorry, the, what's that called again, Sean? It's the thing, transcript. Yes. Thank you, Sean, for helping me out there. I appreciate that. The transcript was distributed. Feel free to take a look at that. And I assume that's your good game. Sean, you're good. All right. So let's move on to Amanda Giac request for Beverly J. Martin property. I did see the schematic. I'm not sure how the proposed GACM from Immaculate infringes on our property, but feel free to weigh in and then we'll move on to our construction projects.
Maybe I can jump in here because I've invited a great friend and leader, Lesley McBean-Clairborn is here. And she, we've had an initial conversation about the great plans that GIAC has for our community. And I would love for her to share some about her thinking and what the request would be of us, if I may, love it.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, and thank you for the invite. Thank you, Facilities Committee of the Board of Education, for allowing me to join you this afternoon. So if you, for those of you who do not know, GIAC was successful in purchasing the Immaculate Conception School gym from Ithaca Neighborhood Housing Services. They subdivided the property. They purchased the entire Immaculate Conception property, subdivided and sold the gym off to us. GIAC in its current space, in its current space, doesn't have capacity to grow anywhere. And so we were fortunate when we learned of Immaculate Conception coming on board. So what we are interested in doing, and what we're interested in doing is not only developing the gym to be a fuller or to its fullest court size, but also building for program space as well. The gym as it stands right now is about 10 feet shy of ideal regulation sized court for basketball, for tournaments, and so on and so forth. With the driveway that belongs to the property, that's about another five feet. So what we were intending and asking this school district for, and I say intending deliberately, was for about five feet of space. Originally, we thought we'd need about 10 feet of space. We're asking about five feet of space into Immaculate, Immaculate into the BGM sign to be able to extend the court lengthwise and have enough space for, for safety, for players, you know, that they're not running right into the wall almost immediately. So developing this gym, as I said, is more than just a gym. We're looking for program space. We will be developing the second floor of it, which exists right now, but only for air handling units and mechanicals. And so we'll leave a corner for those, but make the rest of the space into classroom space that, and office space that our entire team program operation can move into that facility. We feel that this is a great opportunity with INHS putting up new housing, new families moving in to be able to have good recreational space in a neighborhood that could be available, not just to GIAC, but to others as well, including our, our partners with BGM, who we both use each other's space as, as we need. So whether it's the pool or our gym for shelter in emergency drills, or we going to BGM for our, our breakfast and so on and so forth. So what we are looking at today and what I approach you about today is literally about five feet of space. Now I said intended, and I want to circle back to that only because our structural engineer, who is working on the project, has indicated to us that we might be able to accommodate our needs without having to encroach on BGM space that much. However, they still need to do a little bit more measuring. And the only thing we might need space for, if we do encroach, would be just enough to make sure that there is, the distance that's needed between property lines is maintained. That might be the only thing that we would need, but not to build on. So that's just sort of the picture of what we're dealing with right now. And at 2:30 today, I got that information from a structural engineer, who is volunteering his time from Tatum Engineering, another company that's working collaboratively with us. Just about everyone who's worked with us in this project has been volunteering their time, donating, doing pro bono work from the architects. So as I said, the structural engineer and others. And we really do appreciate it very much. So that's what we're looking at. Maybe might be way less than what we originally had approached you on, and mainly just to maintain property line distancing.
No, go ahead, Dr. Ash.
Hi, hi, Kate. Leslyn, how are you?
I'm good.
Good, good. So we've looked at that schematic and certainly are supportive of our partnership with GIAC always. There's a lot of benefits we each gain from each other, even when we're trying to distance, socially distance our children. Here's the impact on BGM and what I'm hoping the, maybe there's like a little exchange or something, right? When we look at it, it goes, that building would be a brick wall that comes into, now you're saying, and now it's five feet plus a little something, maybe not 10 feet, that goes into the garden. But let's note also that that's, that goes into the garden on the east side, moves eastward into our garden. But from the north to the south, from the Court Street area and towards our building, it's about 100 feet of wall. So I just calculated by that, by counting fence posts. So now it's like 500 square feet. That's in our downtown playground, which is already small and has all kinds of little nooks and crannies where kids get over there, where we're trying to supervise around that corner and around that corner. We're going to add another corner. It's a small, it's a great thing for GIAC. It's a small number in the world of construction. It's a significant impact on our little footprint. Granted, we are also doing way more outdoor education now across the street at the park, under the trees. It's good. We'll make it work. I'm not, not saying we shouldn't do this. I think it's a good idea. I just think we should note that the impact, while not 10 feet in, is still 500 square feet, right? And what I was hoping would be to navigate ways we could fundraise so that if we're going to have that kind of like big old wall there, that not only we get your teens and our kids painting a mural on it together, with, you have some mural artists as well who are exquisite in how they work, and I think our kids would benefit. I would also love if on the southern side of that wall, we could build up to like six feet high worth of climbing wall things that get put in there by Paul and his guys. And on the side near the garden, if we could fundraise for a reasonably small but effective greenhouse that we could expand by, if we're going to lose garden, and we have a pretty significant garden program, to expand the garden possibilities by creating greenhouse things, we can be there more in the year. If we can't have as many kids with as much space, but we could have more time there, we could be learning about seedlings and all that added stuff. We have a good partnership with Cooperative Extension. Again, might be a great thing for teens to support. And you know, you often have teens who have some day schooling there, even before Zoom school. You know, those kids working with Jody, for them to work with our kids in a greenhouse and develop that skill set for themselves as well for us, I think would be awesome. So if we could get that collaboration, that I know, Leslyn, I believe you would be supportive. If we can get some collaborative funding for those, they're not big asks, but they, they would be high impact and not big costs.
So they all sound like really great ideas, Dr. Ash, even outside of building. I love the idea of a climbing wall. Of course, I start thinking liability, everything else that goes with that.
That's why the south side of the wall will be right on the grass. I'm not putting it on the macadam.
I absolutely love that idea of it. The, the only thing is I do have to think about, I, I don't know how much of that outside space that we have versus what belongs to INHS. And so I have to make sure that I have, you know, that designed down well. But regardless, I think of a climbing wall is, is, is a wonderful thing to have in that area as well.
Susan, I may be confused. I'm taking a look at Google Maps right now to try to get an idea of the space. I drove by the other day just to make sure I had a, you know, a physical understanding of what it looked like as well. My understanding is what we're basically talking about is the extension where that driveway currently goes right to the southeast side of the building, right? So we're talking about the east side of the building. So we already have a wall that's there.
Yes.
Well, well, there's a wall, then there's a driveway, right?
Yes, but it's not on our property. That wall is there, but it has to come out into our, right? It has to come out.
Right. That part I understand. And I understand it does have an impact. But what I'm trying to figure out is, it doesn't seem, you have a much better idea than I do. That part I understand. But there's already wall there, and I'm trying to understand how extending the wall an additional five feet has a significant impact on what we're trying to do, as opposed to the benefits of the collaboration that we may get in return.
I don't think it, it has a significant impact, but I don't think it has to be negative, is my point. My understanding is that INHS owns that driveway. So if you're talking about extending five feet into our property, it's five feet from the driveway into us, not five feet from the wall. It's five feet, if it's five feet of our property, it's five feet in from our fence line, unless our fence line was, not in the property the right way. So if I look at where our fence line is, and I go in five feet, I'm in the middle of the garden. I'm in the middle of the play area where the kids are building castles right now. I'm in the middle of grassy field, and it extends, well, 100 feet from the, the north fence line approximately into, into our, into our yard.
Yep.
So you come down and you draw that out like that. It's a chunk, right? And it's, it's worth it for our partnership and for GIAC to have that chunk. But it's a chunk in our footprint that I don't want to, like, act like it's nothing, right?
Right. The only thing I would say, it's not in the middle of the, right. It's not in the middle of the garden.
No, 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 no. No, it chunks into the, yeah.
That part I get. And I'm wondering if there are ways in which, since we own the property across the street, and I realize we probably don't want young people across the street, even though we already do during warmer months, if there are other things that we may be able to consider to be creative as well. I'm just trying to figure out how we may be able to solve.
We've always thought that it would be great if the city would build steps up and over and then down so we can cross in the middle of the block without worrying about cars coming left, right, and center across driveways and curbs. And GIAC has a right to be parked on the street there as they need to for their staff, and it puts our kids in between cars.
Well, I'm sure you're going to talk to Savante about that.
Or close that block.
Conversation a while ago, but.
Close that block off.
All right. Thank you. That's helpful for me to understand. So if I could ask you, Rob, I know you were probably doing this next. Leslyn, you're giving us a heads up before making the ask, or you're asking us to bring us to the board for a vote? I'm just trying to understand.
Originally, I was asking you to bring us to the board for a vote, but since 2:30, as I said today, there was some new information that I wanted to give you a heads up on before I make a formal ask for something more specific. Originally, when I sent it to you, I thought, yes, we'd need to cut in about 10 feet, 10 to 15 feet onto BGM property. That is not what I'm being told we need anymore. And I want to be real clear in what it is I'm asking, that I wanted to appear today. I wanted to give you a heads up to what we might be looking for. And also just to hear some of the things like Susan said, and what are ways that we can be collaborative? Because nothing that we do at GIAC is solo. Everything we do is for the benefit of the community in more ways than one. And so I'm, you know, really interested. You, you talked about outdoor learning and doing more and more of that. You and I have had a conversation about, you know, painting the outdoor chalkboard, you know, which we did on the GIAC wall, and we'll happily do it on, you know, the wall of this new gym as well. And it creates a lot of space for, for learning. So there are a number of things, and it's good to get this sort of feedback that we can bring back. So, and so, yeah, so that's why I was coming today, just to let, you know, things have shifted a little bit. We're not looking for 10 to 15 feet of space. If anything, we're looking for a maximum of five, five feet to create a walkway.
So just for my benefit and just to be clear on what this will possibly affect Beverly J. Martin, Dr. Ash, we're looking, that fence still has to exist. And so we're really looking that, that fence in that right of way will still exist when this addition is complete. And so that fence has to move in at least five feet. Presumably before it was 10 feet, but that whole fence for 100 feet has to move in, correct? And that's, that's the impact. The building will be on, well, GIAC property now, now that it's been purchased. So, right. And so INHS is going to tear down old school buildings and standalone gym. And Leslyn, certainly to the west, there's still that residential house that's not a part of, of the INHS. That's property, correct? Is that still there? You can't go west. You have to come east. Is that correct?
Right. I have to come east because interestingly enough, between that house, which, you know, don't tell anybody, I've been trying to get the owner to, to sell it, but they're not. And the, the gym, the western wall of the gym is all the storm drains. And so we can't build out on that end at all.
Right. And that's, that's helpful to know. You know, I've, I've been by there a lot, but had not really looked closely what was to the west other than the, the house that was not part of the deal when the Immaculate sold, right? So it's understood why you have to come east, right?
And just to my board colleagues, I'm partial to this project, not only because of the collaboration with GIAC and the work that I see them do with our young people, and a lot of our BGM students are GX students at the same time, but also know that it will help house the Rashad Richardson Basketball Court. And the great things that both Dr. Richardson and Arlene Richardson have done for our community as well. So I want, it just, I wanted to try to put that out there, that this has a community impact above and beyond both GIAC and BGM as well.
Thank you for that, Sean. That is definitely, a definite, that's a given. We will be naming that court in honor for Rashad Richardson. The court itself. But there is still naming opportunities for every other room, for hoops, for other things. If any of you, you know, might be interested, know that we'll take it just for a small fee.
For hoops, really? Okay. This could be interesting.
But yeah, so that's what we're looking at. And again, I will come back to you when I have a more definitive ask once I get together with our structural engineer and our architects, new drawings. You know, like I said, at 2:30 today, they sent me some stuff. I was like, I can't do anything with this right now. And, and we'll let you know, but they tell me it was good news that we don't need as much space anymore.
Well, go ahead. Well, Sean, I'll go, but then Sean, but certainly it's helpful for, for us as we go to the board, as we review, just to get a, a good visual on what that, that fence line change would be and how it would impact the BGM property. And just so we can, we can look at it and we can explain to the rest when we do have to make a decision and have a vote. So they're up to speed. And so I'm a visual learner, so it's always best if we can see it. So that's great. And Sean, go ahead.
Rob, I had the exact same request. I appreciate it, right? Just a visual of the property lines, both current and what would be afterwards would be very helpful for all of our board members, including myself. So thanks for that ask, Rob.
And Brad, do you have anything? And Dr. Ash, go ahead.
I just wanted to throw in that, what I don't have yet that will impact our school significantly and not positively is when the construction's going on for the INHS project with all the apartments and the ways in which that dovetails with when it's going to be construction for GIAC. And we're going to try to run a school during all of that on a very huge plot of construction. And I would like a little consideration and, and communication on every step of the way so I know how to plan whatever that impact is, which I assume will be significant for a while, especially when they do those pilings that just go bam, bam.
Well, certainly. I mean, similar to the work that was done with the Marcus Flats Building that you all did and work that we did with the pool, we do our best to make sure that we are communicating that we are getting neighborhood input that includes the school. We'll make sure that that is happening. We are trying our best to coordinate the gym construction at the same time as the housing. Obviously, the housing would go on much longer than the gym reconstruction work, but we're trying to coordinate so that a lot of that noise is happening at the same time and not, you know, three months of noise, then a short break, and then three more months of noise. So we're doing our best to coordinate with INHS.
I just have just one comment is, I'd love to see to make it work, and I think it's very possible to. And I also do like Dr. Hesbox's idea of making that wall meaningful in some way. So it isn't just a big blank thing, you know, whether it's the blackboard or climbing wall or green, a green wall, maybe. Window box, something so that it's, so it becomes meaningful for the, an asset for your, your playground. I think that would be a win-win.
And the only thing I'll add, it's, it's going to be a climbing wall, whether we make it a climbing wall or not.
Yeah, but there's ways to make it intentional so that it's not just a dead space.
Brad, you okay?
Yeah, I texted Dr. Brown a couple of comments. Just a reminder, you cannot give land away. And if you're going to sell land, you got to take it to the voters. So that, you know, from a timing standpoint, if you're going to take it to the voters, it's next May, or it's a special election and the cost involved in that special election. So I think your option is, your best option is to be looking for a land swap, which you can do as a board without going to the voters. And Amanda, you've got experience doing that with the city. So I would think that might be the best route to go.
Brad, is that what we did at LACS?
Yes, that's correct. We, we took, we took a roadway, roadway behind Fall Creek that had never been transferred to the school district, even though it was closed off. So it worked out, worked out really perfectly. They took that little corner. We had a possession of that little, that Fall Creek. So that one worked out well. And hopefully you can figure out something like that here.
Right, Brad. I assumed it would be, we would try to do a swap of some sort. Obviously, we can always vote on it and make it if we, if we need to.
If you need to.
There we go, Leslyn. All sorts of feedback for it. It's always a pleasure. Always a pleasure.
Indeed. Well, thank you all very much for your time. Thanks for accommodating me. And happy holidays, everyone. And you'll hear from me again. All right. Take care.
So very good. If we could, if we, we have like 15 minutes to roll through the monthly progress update. We do want to get to Phase Two Schematics or Work Session piece two. So let's go.
Okay. Thanks, Rob. This is Cindy. I'm not sure why my video is not working. But first of all, we just wanted to give an update on where we stand with the high school roof replacement bid that we took bids for last week. Overall, we are under budget. And that is with the low plumbing bidder withdrawing his bid for an inconsistency in their submission. So good news overall. We have met with all of the low bidders on the other contracts, as well as second low for plumbing and HVAC, just to do our due diligence and ensure that whoever we award to has bid it properly and included the correct scope of work. At this time, we are comfortable with making recommendation on the roof, the HVAC and the electric contract. And we are still working on the plumbing contract based on the fact that the low bidder withdrew and trying to verify our next steps forward. So more to come. But our intention is to, at a minimum, submit a letter of recommendation for those three contracts by the end of the week for the board's action at Tuesday night's meeting. Any questions on the roof bids?
Hi, Crow. Good.
Okay. Phase one update. At Anfield, we did get the interior doors installed. They're awaiting electric and controls to be completed. Might be done by the end of this week. They were supposed to be able to get up there today. And now with the entire district moving to remote, it affords us an opportunity to get into the elementary school spaces during the day a bit more freely. And so we anticipate that we should be able to finish those pieces up quickly. One of our new team members has taken that effort on for us for all remaining door hardware and control installations. So we have someone who's focused only on that, that, sure that we can facilitate getting that completed before the school district returns after the holidays. The remaining work at Anfield is the security windows. We had initially reported that we were looking at potentially having to install a new frame, which was above and beyond the specified work for the project. However, after further review by the glazing subcontractor with a physical visit to the site, he, he was able to do the upgrades with the new glazing in the existing frames. The static side lights of that system in the wall, that glazing came in, but it was the wrong size. So it's been reordered. And the glazing for the sliding window, now that it's been confirmed that we can make that framework, is in the same order. And at this point, we have no delivery date. Glazing has been one of those items or glass that we have been experiencing shipment delays with due to COVID and the uncertainties that are our, our world right now. At Caroline, we've reported that work is complete. We have received O and M and as built from the contractor, as well as a sign off of his punch list items. So we should be able to report in the next month that that work is complete as well. You know, all work there is complete and final payment has been made. At Beverly J. Martin, we have, last week clarified and cleaned up any outstanding items with the interior and the exterior doors. And as of last week, they were both functioning properly. We are also testing the intercom wiring, which has been reported to us not working as it was prior to construction, to ensure that that wire is still continuous and providing the proper band. continuous and providing the proper bandwidth. That testing is scheduled for this week. So more to report on that once that is completed and determined where the issue may be. At Bell Sherman Elementary School, the overhead coiling shutter and counters have been fully installed. However, again, we are missing some glazing at the top of that or a transom. It's expected to arrive the first week in January. Holding my breath for that. And the the new walk off carpet in the vestibule remains to be completed. But again, with the remote learning that affords us the opportunity to get that in over the holidays. Bell Sherman Annex, both the exterior and the interior entrances have been installed. The electric and controls are being scheduled for this timeframe as well. The interior set of doors had an issue with the closer. There was a conflict with the overhead space afforded in that area. So a new closer has been ordered and we're awaiting delivery of that, which will go on the other side of the door where there's more space. At Transportation, Edger has completed their punch list work and signed off on that. We're scheduling Tetra Tech to do their final inspection as weather allows now that we're into winter weather. And I don't think it'll happen this week with the snowstorm. Some components of the radiant heat system have been installed, but revised units had to be reordered because of existing equipment and construction elements in the transportation facility that didn't allow those elements to be installed as shown on the drawings. And those were delivered last week. Installation is pending. At the stadium, the bleacher installation is ninety nine percent complete on the home side and a hundred percent complete on the visitor side. We need to get a letter of substantial completion from G T Grandstands to schedule Tetra Tech to come out and do that inspection for the bleacher installation. Last month, the press box was on site, but wasn't set. It has now been set in place. There are some miscellaneous areas of the stadium still to receive top coat pavement in the spring, as we've reported previously. Fencing fabric has started the installation in the outer area. The perimeter of the stadium as a whole, there's an interior fencing that will go in in the spring. And that's being held off because of surfacing and pavement that still has to go in as previously reported. That perimeter fence is anticipated to be ninety nine percent complete by the end of this week with some temporary fencing in places that we aren't able to put the permanent in because of those reasons I just stated. As previously reported, surfacing of the running track is still scheduled for next spring. Turf installation is complete and there was a punch list review completed. It did have some items that needed to be addressed and Shinango Contracting is on site this week addressing those. We'll see how far they get with again, the weather that we have forecasted over the next couple of days. But they have been very responsive and we anticipate they'll address those things quickly. At the high school area B, front entrance work is ongoing. Some of the panel framing has gone up. The glazing still hasn't arrived. And as of our meeting last week with the contractor, there's been no delivery date scheduled for that either. In the interim, should that entrance be completed otherwise, Wellover will install some type of temporary enclosure in those frames so that the entrance can be used safely. Area J. We're awaiting sign off from the contractors on the punch list to schedule Tetra Tech to come out and do their final inspection. We did meet with the staff in the nursing area and with Paul on some of their concerns. And we have addressed one of those, which was water to the refrigerator. That work was completed today. At the area J C crossover or the breezeway, those doors are approximately seventy five percent complete with installation for the most part. Hardware, electric and controls remain on three of the four sets. The large door section, or what would be used by maintenance to get equipment in and out of that area is going to require a redesign. The manufacturer of the specified door cannot, they say, fabricate the door the size required. So we're working with Tetra Tech currently to review some options of what could be installed in there to meet the district's need. Area C in the pool. We have witnessed some cracking and delamination of the new materials that have been applied to the wall primarily at the deep end. Touch tech has been on site to review that condition. We're monitoring the condition to see if any of the areas identified are growing. The walls and floors have been sounded twice, once to identify where these areas are. And now a second time to see if if it isn't growing and migrating further. Tetra Tech had requested that Wellover provide a substantial amount of information to determine what could be the cause for this. And that was submitted by Wellover last Friday. Tetra Tech is currently reviewing and digesting that information to identify any possible modifications that may need to be made to the installation process to eliminate any of these issues at reinstallation or potentially to identify any processes or materials that were incorrectly used or installed. Anticipated completion at this point of the pool is the end of March. Area F. The exterior east and west doors have been installed. The north and south door frames, which are the corridor sides have been installed, but the doors came prepped wrong from the supplier and had to be reordered. Delivery is expected of those replacement doors in the first week of January. In the interim, we are putting on temporary door hardware that will allow those corridor doors to be locked at the district's discretion so that the courtyard doors going in over between area J and C can be completed. We need those doors at F to maintain fire egress. Any questions?
Sure, Cindy. Just to the pool, we've talked about that a lot. And I think we probably won't get into deep detail there. Just Welcome Center. There realize there's problems with glazing and when the actual glass will be delivered that for some of the pieces. So what are we looking at as far as, you know, the furniture, the interior space is is that essentially complete? We're still waiting on furniture there. You know, exterior, we're still looking at, you know, porta potty there. So when are we going to see, you know, is there a timeline on when we're going to see sometime in January that this be completed or at least usable space?
So for the interior, I'll take, yep, I'll take the interior question first. Yes, furniture is still outstanding. That's a direct purchase by the district. We did receive invoices or the district did earlier or later, late last week, I believe, from one of the manufacturers. And we reached out to R O I, who is the supplier that the district worked with. And they confirmed that the invoice does not need to be paid until the the items are in place, which is typical. And that they were working on delivery dates. They didn't have any firm delivery dates from the manufacturers yet. But we're in that, you know, based on the six weeks from ordering, we're in that two two to three week, I think, maybe window, probably closer to the two week. I'm not sure exactly when the district placed the order. But we should be close to sometime in early January, that stuff arriving, as long as there's no delays with supply streams and shipping, right? We I'm not even sure where this stuff is coming from. If it's from China, we've got we've got big issues probably with getting through customs. On the exterior, as I reported, some of the framing started going up. That subcontractor is on site. And as soon as they get that all completed with the weather, obviously, it's exterior work. It's anticipated that should not be much longer, Rob. And as soon as that works done and we don't need to fence off a lift, we should be able to clean up that front entrance and turn it over for usage to the district.
Thanks for that. And I'll just just hop to the stadium. There was questions with the turf. Apparently that is being addressed. Again, the question is, you know, sometime after the first of the year, we would hope that at least the 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 west, the west gates be open. So we would like that turf to be usable. Once the stadium work is complete, that the stadium structure is complete. And we certainly would like the turf available for whatever activity anybody can do there on decent days as we work through the into the springtime. So is is that going to be a date in the future in January or February? Or what's the what's the plan?
I would hope that it could be in January, Rob. Like I said, Shinango was quite reactive and and got out there as quickly as they could after they received the punch list and I, you know, they did your turf before. They've been a partner with the district on maintaining that. I think, you know, they want to stay in your good graces. So they'll do what they need to as quickly as possible, weather permitting. Anything else in the in the stadium should be ready, like I reported with the fence by the end of this week. And anything that needs to be saved off to be able to allow kids out there, we're reviewing and will get addressed before we allow that to to do to be used by the district, just so that there's no issues with kids, you know, cutting themselves on a fence post that doesn't have a cap or anything like that. Once that installation is complete, we'll make sure that it is left and turned over in a safe condition for temporary use.
Exactly. Thanks. Thanks, Cindy.
Rob, I can add a couple of things quick here. One, there's a plan possibly by Edger to even put in some additional fencing and they're going to leave it loose so they could actually do the coating come spring. So that's one option that we were they were looking at. And I will say that front entrance, for some reason, unbeknownst to even Wellover today, the glass showed up at late afternoon and they put in the glass. We were all thinking it was a temporary because they were told they had to put something in if they couldn't get the glass, but the glass showed up. So it's our understanding the class that went in there like at two o'clock today, two to like three thirty, just before I was left, they were putting in that glass. So it's our understanding that the glass, the glazing did show up to late today. So that didn't even make it.
Wow, Kim, that's great.
Things are changing. We don't even know when it's coming now, which is unfortunate, but at least it's coming.
Thanks, Kim. I appreciate that. On both stadium and Welcome Center, so correct. Other other questions? Brad, anything? And Sean?
I'm good. That's great.
So so thanks for the update, Cindy and Kim and Chris. Let's talk for a bit fifteen minutes or so about Phase Two.
Thanks, Rob. I'm going to share my screen. We will be talking a little bit about L A C S and South Hill primarily, and the goal being to review some exterior images that we've you know, sort of previewed at O A C M. Let me know when people can see cast stone exterior on the screen. Okay, we're good. Thanks, Amanda. Okay, so we'll start with L A C S. And so as a result of, you know, going back and forth and throwing out some ideas, getting some great feedback from the L A C S community, talking to O A C M, we we were sort of version two point two point one, whatever it is now. We heard we heard that the blue was was really sort of beloved to the students, but maybe not too much blue. We had one of those was a couple, we're down to a couple ideas here. And one is to have a good amount of glue, but to have some precast concrete, you know, on the on the top part there and around the door to tie into the existing material. So that on the on the building, there's an existing precast concrete and brick. And so the idea is to tie in those materials and then add this new glass. So we have, you know, some images of that where we have the blue columns. This 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 large element, which is hiding the current work and piping and all that kind of stuff that you see at the front of L A C S. So that's a that's a bold element. And so we we in the blue as well as a signature item. And, you know, we've talked before about the green roof that is is kind of typical for both of these scenarios. We did lose the L A C S signage up here that we when you're, you know, when you're writing this, you're really very close to it and that gets cut off because of your angles. So we also, I'll show you the other ahead to the other option that we're under consideration, which is a sort of a wood like look. These are phenolic panels. That's sort of the trade name. It's the material. It's not actually wood. It looks like wood. And basically, it's the same product that's in your high school. So there's there's another idea to clad that area similarly with wood and do a little bit less precast concrete a bit and have a sort of a different similarly, we have this tall element being that wood clad product.
Chris, can I just ask you a question about the wood panels? So is that is that going over the cast concrete or like what's on what would be behind the wood panels? Like what supports them?
So the precast concrete and the wood are options. We do one or the other. So.
Yeah, I guess I've been my, I mean, my first impression is I really, I think the I'm drawn to the wood one, just I think it's more inviting. And I think the the precast concrete, I worry about kind of water stains and just gray cement in upstate New York. But so anyway, but I do like the improvement of of less of the blue as an accent versus where it was before, which was pretty overwhelming.
One of the ways to think about these two options are the precast concrete is an existing building material, right? You see it, you know, on the surrounding this window, we see it, you know, at various spots along the building. So it's it's kind of trying to go in that direction and make this feel like, you know, it's part of the larger building. And the wood is a different approach, and it makes this feel like it's a sort of a new intervention. So this is something that we are looking to, you know, figure out pretty soon. And I appreciate, you know, whatever feedback folks are willing to give this evening.
I'm going to co sign in my, I realize that the L A C S community is very active in its decision making. But I'm a I'm a better fan of the wood. I think it's, lack of a better word, a softer material in terms of to the eye and doesn't look as institutional as the cement looks.
I would agree. But certainly, the two choices, either one, I'm hyper solid. You know, I think it can't go wrong. But, you know, the wood seems just to be a little warmer. Just, you know, I'm certainly, I think I've grown to like it. But we would certainly, I would, I would go with certainly the the will of the L A C S community on either one. And then, Chris, the interior had options as well, correct?
Yes, I'll show those. I'd like to say two more things about the wood. Want to be clear, it's not actual wood. And it is the same product that is on Ithaca High School. And there is, I'll just be clear that I've received feedback that L A C S appreciates their unique presentation to the world, you know.
Uniqueness, Chris.
I'm sorry?
They appreciate their uniqueness, I think.
Yeah. And so there there were specifically when we got feedback from from them on the previous round, there was some. Yeah. And so there, there were specifically when we got feedback from, from them on the previous round, there was some, you know, we are, we don't want to be IHS. So just put that out there.
Chris, I appreciate that. And I think one of the things that we have to consider, this may be a product that we consider on other buildings throughout the district. Right? South Hill is a version as well. So while LACS is definitely unique, it is a part of the Ithaca City School District. And some of this may be ICSD, for lack of a better word, branding, right? That if we use this on other buildings. So just trying to give you some language to help negotiate if we, if that comes back up around again, that it may not be an Ithaca High School thing. It may be an Ithaca City School District thing.
Yes, and we'll see. Yeah, that's, that's a great point, Sean. Thank you for adding that. And we'll see that on South Hill as well in just a moment. Also, if you're familiar with the concept of biophilia, you can Google it. It's basically speaks to humans innate connection with nature. So, you know, having materials that sort of evoke a natural natural materials is something that tends to make people feel good, right? So that's a good way to enter the building and something that.
You know, I just want to say one more thing about the wood versus the cement is that it, it is more natural. It, I think it will work better with the garden on top in terms of kind of being complimentary. Also, I think the color ties the two parts of the building together because just the color of the wood in relationship to the brick. It knits the two parts of the building, so it feels more cohesive to me. So, yeah, I, the more I think about it, the more strongly I like this version.
So thanks for your comments.
Chris, my apologies. I know at some point, Rob, we had this conversation at a number of schools as well. At some point in time, there's going to have to be a decision that is made. And my assumption is it will be against LACS policy, a board decision. Is that, is that accurate or is that not accurate?
Well, it's always comes down to what we, what we tell the architect and the construction manager, right? So, but we want to, you know, work, want to work with the schools, but eventually people like us to eventually make a decision, Sean, because then that, it, it's our responsibility then. And then they get to complain about it for 20 years. So.
Brad, I had just one question. We had talked about bollards or concrete planters or something. Struck a vehicle sliding down and into the front there. Are we, are we still thinking we may do that or is that not something you want to do?
Well, we have columns. We have a masonry wall. We are very tight on this, on the sidewalk here. We could, we had talked about, if I can zoom out a little bit, maybe doing some sort of guard rail. There's an existing guard rail that, you know, comes down a part of this and being able to do a little bit more of that or maybe a low wall. As you come into this, you're, you're, you know, you come down, but it's very much at an angle, right? So if somebody lost control, they'd be going over toward, toward the end here, I think more than into the building.
Could just to pick up on that point, I, I think the with this current design, you are going to get people sitting outside. They probably sit outside anyway. So that does seem important to me, to make sure that if a car did lose control, that the pedestrian, the people hanging out would be protected.
Well, we can certainly, you know, look at some more bollards and some sort of protected, more protected areas.
If it's just a low wall that people could sit on.
Yeah, I think doing something up near the top end of the site makes, makes a lot of sense. We could add something down here to protect this area a little bit more.
It'll probably work. Probably a quick site visit sometime just to, before we decided on that.
Let's look inside for a moment and then we'll jump to South Hill in the last few minutes. So we've been talking a little bit about.
But Chris, can you also check with Liz Burner for the bus drivers in terms of the swing space that they need? Cause I'm just thinking about the design of a school bus versus a car and sometimes that front end that is in front of that front wheel. They actually need that space to make, to, to turn. And so I just would be really, I would want to make sure that we talk to the experts around that in terms of, of that we're not missing something.
I, I've just shared a, an aerial, just to let you know kind of what the, the angle of that, that we're really talking about. It's, it's really almost by the time especially you're down here. You know, you can see the angle and how sort of parallel almost we are with the building. Once we get down here, I mean, happy to, happy to add more protective features, but as far as a bus hanging over, which is a really good, you know, point to think about the vehicle and especially the back and as things turn, you know. But, but once, once they've gone down here, it's not, there's not a lot of real angle that they need to navigate to, you know, to get through there. Okay, moving inside, we talked a little bit about screens and some different options for screens and living walls, which were some of the things that you know, again, blending requests from different, different areas. So one of the locations that we talked about a screen here was just inside, right? So you could potentially see it a little bit from the outside, although, you know, as you're driving past, you, you wouldn't really, it wouldn't be distracting to you. You come and see that screen and having, you know, those, there are products that, that are these living wall systems that you, you just kind of hang on a wall and you can grow some plants on that. So that's one idea. Another idea is, I went out of order here and I should have just. The other idea is to have the digital sort of presence at the, at the front here on this, on this sort of vertical element and do a screen sort of more vertically and have an opportunity there to be able to see that. So that's something that we're considering and we can.
I'm, I'm just a little confused. So that the prior image was the screen in the middle of the living wall? What, did I see that correctly or did I imagine that?
Yes, that's correct.
But, okay, so wouldn't that be an issue with moisture and the digital screen? It seems like having it on a wall, on its own wall might, I would worry about the condition of a screen in combination with plants.
Yeah, we could give some border to it and remove the plants over top of the screen, you know, if there's a concern about that.
Yeah, but if you're like watering and gardening, I, I don't know. It seems to me it makes more sense to have the digital wall separately. So you don't even have to worry about it.
Sure, yeah. It's, I think they, for Chris, I think they've done a screen amongst a living wall and other, other areas. So it has been done before. It all depends on the structure and components of that living wall. What does it look like? Is it, is it separate little pots in there or however they build them, right?
Yes, there are different ways of doing it that way. I'm going to jump to South Hill very quickly. I know we're kind of right at our time. So I probably should have ushered us along a little more quickly. So here, the decision, we've got a brick and stone exterior option and we have that wood, same sort of wood panel and stone exterior options that we're trying to decide between. So here's the brick and stone. One of the comments that I received from Perry was that their colors are, you know, pointed out the silver and red. So the stone sort of works a little bit more into the silver and the brick is the, is the red. This is the wood option sort of, sort of give that idea of the, sort of the district branding. If that's, you know, something that we, that we want to start to introduce. So I'm looking for some feedback on these two options. We're doing a little bit of study on, on the skylights and some different options there that we can look back around on. So any comments on wood versus brick and a preference here?
I'm a fan of the non-wood again, whatever that phrase was used, not the biophilia, but the product. My only concern is I think about this is that this is going to be like the 1970s, right? That we will see that wood and we'll be like, oh, they did that in 2020, right? It will sort of mark, be marked by time. But with that being said, I, I definitely like that look, especially against the new stone on the, on the right hand side.
I like it as well. Would it be possible to see that image again a little more closely? Just the, the more close up version of it.
That one?
Oh, yeah. I thought there was one that, that brought us a little bit closer in there. Yeah. Now, what about this, this ceiling? I still am wondering about the area underneath the overhang and what that material. I think last time you were going to put some kind of, not a tile, but I forget the name of the.
That could be a plaster material. That could also be metal sort of linear material. The idea is that it, it's not the focus. It sort of goes away and you focus on the, the walls more.
Of course, I'm a fan of the, I'm pretty fan of the classic stone and brick, but I'm, I can go with either. But I do just conceptually and just looking at the picture, I do like the stone and brick. I do like the skylight, the, the peak skylights rather than the more modern one, Chris, but that's just me.
Which skylight is that?
So we're playing with a couple of different skylights. One is this sort of clear story version, but it's similar to what we've shown previously. Another one is with some very low skylights, so it doesn't have a very much of a profile there. And, and then obviously the one with the peak. You know, we think those does support the entrance, you know, especially as they're coming in, coming in at the central from afar.
When you say peak skylight, you're, you're talking this, this, that, that kind of like triangular kind of.
Yeah, it's a little pyramid up there.
Right, exactly.
Could we see the flat one again? Personally, I like the flat one. The more.
Flat or the peak for me, right?
I, I know we're a little bit over time. I apologize for running a little long. I'm here for as long as you want to talk about it.
No, you're good, Chris. We had to pack a lot into a shorter period of time.
Chris, is there a timeline for you in terms of, I mean, is this possible for us to sort of think about it and then talk about this in January?
Yes, I think if we could, if we could get a firm decision in January, that would work with our timeframe to be able to, you know, sort of finish the, finish the documents. Yeah, that would work.
We also have board meetings as well. We could always do, you know, this conversation at a board meeting, Rob. We can talk about that if you want. But I just wanted to make sure we're not delaying your design development, Chris, in terms of submissions to state ed. I also recognize that we're cutting into finance committee as well. So I want to, I want to, you know, balance those things.
No, it's fine. This is a decision at the level of detailing and we can be responsive either way within that timeframe. So that's fine.
Well, let's, Amanda, if we could just do, we'll do a quick facilities. Well, bond referendum project update in January would make sense to me, right? You know, that would be hopefully the end of phase one and let's hear some decisions for phase two that we're dealing with at the work session level. And, and Chris and Sean, anything else before we let Amanda have to finance?
I'm good.
No, just to, obviously because I spent time there, but wondering at what point in time we're going to have conversations about infield and particularly the parking lot. It's not in great shape, especially for the in-person drop off and pickup. So I know that's a later issue, but I'd like to know when we'll have, start having that dialogue.
Do the, do the lights work at all out there, Sean?
Yes, they do. They're still not great, but they work.
Well, that's a big improvement, you know? I mean, that's, it was dark the last month. So Amanda, good. Chris, thank you. Thanks to Kim and Cindy. So those who want to can have to finance and anything else, Amanda?
No, next month, we do have another city Ithaca request for, I think it's a building on Lake Street side here. And it is for the regulator building that they want to move from across the street, that little triangle over to our property. So another ask from the city.
It'll be a different conversation, I think, than we had today, right?
Could, could, since I know we're not, don't have time to talk about it now, but just so I can think about it, where is this regulator building?
It's across the street from the district office. And so what they're asking is that they need to bring that over to our side. It would be most convenient. And so again, it's a consideration request.
Okay, I'll take a look.
All right, very good. Amanda, did you say ask with a K or with a, with a second S? I missed that.
With a K.
Oh, thanks.
No, I'm on film. I have to be really.
Right, these, there'll be a literal transcription in minutes. That'd be fantastic.
I just needed clarity.
Hope you all have a great finance meeting.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Chris.